Order the May eleventh, twenty twenty-three Ventnor City Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Would you please rise for the flag salute? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel.
Here.
Commissioner Mento.
Here.
Mayor Langgraff.
Here. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the law. We do not have any presentations tonight, although we are going to have our budget presentation, I guess. No department head reports, no capital discussion. Uh, we're going to have the public hearing. I think we're going to do that during our workshops. Is that correct?
Yes, we're going to do that now.
Okay, so we'll have our, I'll need a, a motion on the public hearing. For ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four, an ordinance of the city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic, amending chapter two hundred of the code of the Ventnor City. The same relates to water usage first. Are we doing that one?
Yes.
Water usage first?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll need that one, or a motion to open that to the pub, to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearings as described.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, with that, we will have a public hearing on this ordinance, which will be to increase our water usage fees. The water fixed amount is going up from two forty per year to two ninety. And the variable per gallon rate will stay the same. Per thousand gallons and then variable rate for gallons for months above, uh, excuse me, in June, July, and August is also staying the same. So it's, it's a fifty dollar increase for the water, uh, usage base rate. If anybody has any comments on that, please step to the mic, state your name, and ask your question, make your comment. Jim, anybody online on Zoom for that?
Is there anybody on Zoom malicious to comment on the ordinance as noted? No.
Okay, motion to close. Motion to close.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now I need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero four.
Motion to adopt ordinance as described.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Kribel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mento.
Yeah.
Mayor Langgraff.
Yes. Uh, same drill for sewer rates. Um, need a motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five. Ordinance of the city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic, state of New Jersey, amending chapter one eighty-six of the code of the city of Ventnor, as same, as same relates to sewers. Need a motion to open that, please.
Motion to open ordinance zero zero five as described to public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Similar, uh, this, these, the base rate will go from two sixty per year to three ten. Uh, the variable rates will remain the same, uh, per gallon with an in, with the same, similar increase in June, July, and August that is remaining the same from four seventy and five seventy during those summer months. So anyone wishes to comment on this ordinance, please step forward, state your name, and make your comments. Seeing none in the room, Jim, could you please check on Zoom?
Anyone on Zoom wishes to comment on ordinance as noted? No.
Okay, thank you. I'll need a motion to close public portion.
Motion to close public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five as stated.
Motion to adopt ordinance zero zero five as described.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mento.
Yes.
Mayor Langgraff.
Yes. The next item is a resolution twenty twenty-three dash one fifty-two, and Leon, you're going to speak before we adopt that resolution, right?
That resolution is just to introduce, uh, read the budget by title only. It's a-
So we'll do that first, and then you'll-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, so I'll need a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three one fifty-two, which as our auditor indicated, is authorizing the twenty twenty-three municipal budget to be read by title only.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash one five two as described.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kribel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mento.
Yes.
Mayor Langgraff.
Yes. Okay, now we have the public hearing on the municipal budget, but now we're going to hear from Leon.
For me?
Lisa's going to read something for us.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Yeah. The, so two ways we can do it, either we can make comments here or have the public comment first when we answer that. It's your choice. An overview, a summary of the budget is-
That's what I'd like, if you could do that, just, sure, please.
Is an increase of seven point six cents. Uh, this is the first sizable increase you've had since you've been in office. The, you're not alone. Um, this year's factors were, came from all over. Large increase in health benefits, large increase in pension, increases in, in trash collections, um, other insurances, everything caught all at once. And you are not the only one. I've done this story now probably twenty-five times in, in different towns. And your people have hadn't had increases, uh, in years, had increases this year. You also are using more fund balance to offset some of that increase that you have. So we're using more than we have in the past. In fact, it probably a record number that you've used in fund balance to help offset that. Your ratables did increase. Um, you are, right now, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand under the spending cap and a million eight fifty-two under the levy cap. So for all the years that you've been doing well, we've had banks that we had that could absorb these increases.
Right.
And the state has approved your budget. We're clear to go for tonight. In fact, they had no comments at all on the budget, so everything was approved as is, and you're ready to go. So now it's going to be open to the public for questioning and any comments that you have.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll need a motion to open to the public the twenty twenty-three municipal budget.
Open, uh, uh, motion to open to the public for the twenty twenty-three municipal budget as described.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are now open for public comment on our twenty twenty-three municipal budget. If you'd like to have any, anything to say, please step to the microphone, provide your name, address, and provide your comments. We'll also check with, with, uh, our remote Zoom monitor, Jim Pakinowski. Ben?
Yes, Ben Yellow, it's one north, uh, Nashville. Uh, I just have one comment or question, actually, being new to Ventnor as a new, new, new full-time resident. So the seven point six cents increase is just for the city portion, not just the municipal and not the county?
That is correct.
So what are we expecting? What can we expect on the county end of this? Has that been determined yet?
The, the county announced a decrease, and we know we have a decrease on the school.
Okay.
So that's, we won't be any more than seven point six, it'll be lower.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm talking to the mic.
No worries, thank you very much. That's, that was just a question. I know the taxes are, you know, inevitable, but, you know, we were hoping with all the increase in ratables, maybe we'd be sta- stable a little bit longer.
And I had a question, uh, last week, I guess, from a resident saying, and it was a bigger increase than this one. Is this anomaly, or is this something that's going to keep on happening? This is rare. This got blindsided from all sides this year.
Yeah, I mean, it's the perfect storm with, with inflation, fuel, and all the other, and I totally understand that. I operate businesses, and I understand. So I was just wondering whether we were going to get a big county increase to go along with this one. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Anybody else? Jim, can you check in the Zoom? I want to say his room, it just doesn't make sense, right?
Anybody on Zoom wish to comment on the municipal budget? Nope.
Okay. Have a motion to close public portion on the municipal budget.
Um, yeah, motion to close public portion. I would just mention that this, this isn't, this is something that we struggle with, to, to your point, over the years, that over the le- few months, that we would pull any lever that we thought we could if there was, if it was available to us. But I think the fund balance is the one thing that's an anomaly for us, but we, every department has to struggle with this budget. Um, it is, i- if you do look at our, our experience over time, our rates have gone down over uh, our time in office in the last six years. So this is a, this is something that we're, we don't do lightly.
Yeah, one of the things that Leon showed me when we're going through this was a tax bill from twenty sixteen?
Twenty seventeen.
Seventeen, and a tax bill on the same property today.
Yeah, this is, this is-
And, and you're actually paying less in taxes than you did then.
Yeah, so it's-
On that same property.
So the same property that was paying taxes in twenty seventeen is actually paying, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty dollars less than they, today. Unfortunately, you're a new resident, you, but, and, and we also would hope that the ratable increase of literally hun- tens of millions of dollars, but those ratables, just the mi- they're, are fractional in their, in their effect on the tax rate and the income that we get. It's not a one-to-one, so, um, there wasn't enough to keep what is such a, uh, such a close to a million dollars in unfunded, unmandated dollars for those increases in healthcare and pension. That's where, that's the biggest piece of the biggest piece.
From the state.
From the state.
From the state in Jersey.
And we are looking at other options for healthcare, so we know that's-
Right.
We did look at it, and, and no one right now is able to touch these numbers to provide those health services for our rep, for our community, for our, our employees and staff. Um, but that's something we're going to look at over the next year, to see where we go in the next year. The county's looking at a, a countywide
Yeah.
health service.
Yeah.
We're going to look at that, shared service agreement with them. Um, the more people you can get into a, a plan, the cheaper they are. So that's what we're, we're trying to look at.
Same, like what we do for workers' comp and general liability, we're in a joint insurance fund, and we're going to look at-
Yeah.
Joint healthcare fund, a joint health insurance.
I think we've made a lot of, of, of huge improvements in Ventnor, structurally speaking, and, and, and other things, and still kept our tax rate from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two down seven, what you're saying, point oh, point oh seven six.
It's, it's a green number.
Cents.
Yeah.
Seven cents. So imagine if we had that, uh, if that was not as, as careful and, and conservative as we, as we had. But it is the reality.
So, no arguing here.
Yeah. Thanks.
Leon, you said you're seeing a lot, a lot of municipalities experiencing the same.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, absolutely. Mm-hmm. Like I said, just-
Point was eight, over eight.
Last Thursday was eight point four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got two more coming Monday. They're both over five something. I can't tell you who they are and how much it's going to be, but-
Yeah.
You can read about them on Tuesday.
Yeah. Well, maybe Wednesday, depending on-
Maybe Wednesday.
Digital copy of the newspaper.
That's true.
That's joke.
All right, I just wanted to put some color on that.
Yeah.
Motion to close.
I think we already did.
I think we already did that, yeah.
Um, we'll need a motion, Lisa, you'll- All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you're going to read that resolution.
Yep. So resolution adopting the twenty, we'll need a motion to adopt twenty twenty-three municipal budget, and Lisa's going to read that resolution.
Be resolved by the commissioners of the city of Ventnor, county of Atlantic, that the budget here in before set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of twenty-six million eighty-nine thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars for municipal purposes and seventeen million eight hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents for school purposes and a type one school district only to be raised by taxation.
Motion, please.
Motion to adopt resolution as described.
Second.
Lisa, roll call.
Commissioner Kribel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mento.
Yeah.
Mayor Langgraff.
Yes. Leon, thank you.
Very much.
This was not a, an easy budget for, for anybody.
No.
But your expertise guided us through this, and, and we certainly appreciate it, as well as our, each of our department heads. Um, I see a couple here, Chief and, and Ed. Um, we appreciate their help with this, um, in keeping their department budgets where we could work with, and then couldn't do too much with the state mandate and stuff, so.
No. Appreciate your guidance.
Thank you.
See you.
Okay. Next up, we're going, we're going to go back to our normal, um, uh, workshop for, portion of our meeting, which we will go through the rest of the agenda. Um, for discussion, we'll have a public portion on those items, and then we will go into our formal meeting to have to take action. So the first thing we have on there is our minutes, and then this is kind of comical. Um, one very minor um, change to the minutes from the March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting. Uh, Mayor Langgraf advised that Arbor Day will be pushed back from April twenty-seventh. So we're not changing Arbor Day. It's just the change of the proclamation.
I don't think you have the power to do that.
No, I'm pretty sure I don't, so, uh, Lisa's going to end that, in those minutes.
I might have to take the proclamation presentation.
Yes, thank you, thanks. So I'm reading it, I'm like, wait a minute, I'm pretty sure I don't have that power. So, a little, a little levity. So we will adopt those minutes as amended, the executive session minutes from that same date, March twenty-third, and then the regular meeting on April twenty-third. Um, we will then go into the ordinances. First one is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine, and that's section, chapter seventy-nine, section seven regarding violations and penalties of operations of motorized vehicles. Um, we, we changed that up a little bit from last month, and we're, um, we're amending that, uh, and reintroducing it. That deals with motorized bicycles on the boardwalk.
So this particular ordinance talks about motorized vehicles.
Right.
If you remember at the last meeting, we did bicycles, and a lot of residents came in, were questioning about scooters.
Bicycle.
So after further, they looked into it, that we have a specific ordinance.
We did, yeah.
Right, so this is a second ordinance, but this will cover everything now.
Okay. The one that we introduced before was still-
We're going to, we'll adopt that tonight.
Okay.
Because that'll retain just the bicycle.
Gotcha, understood. All right, we good with that?
Yes.
I'm sure we'll have public comment on that at the end. The next one is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero, and that is adding sections one ninety-seven, eleven point one, A one to A four, littering and the care of attainment of construction sites. This will add the requirement on, on construction properties, mainly demolitions and reconstruction.
Right.
Anything significant enough that can have, um, off-site impact. Uh, you've seen these in Longport, and some in Margate. It's about a two-foot-high wooden wall that they put around the property.
Right.
Keeps trash and things from blowing out.
Right.
Something we're going to institute, um, Jimmy Agnesino recommended that.
Oh, so it's going to be something you'll see in Ventnor now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, actually, a lot of the builders actually like it.
Yeah.
As it keeps their stuff on their property.
Right, right, I've seen-
A little bit of an expense, but, but they're reusable.
They're reusable.
Same thing.
Yep.
They're reusable. Uh, the next one is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero one one. Chapter one forty-nine, registration of rental units, imposing inspection requirements for lead-based paints. This is another state mandate that we're going to have to expand our, um, inspection requirements for lead-based paints in homes, uh, rental properties, changes of ownership, things of that nature. Um, we will most likely end up in a shared service agreement, I think, with the county. Um, we've been working with them on, on something to help that inspection cover those costs throughout. It's a very specialized inspection.
Yeah.
Um, so we're working through that process. This is the first step.
Yeah, question. Very timely, when we mentioned that.
Typically, I'd have to dive into that a little bit deeper.
Yeah.
Typically, if it's a, if it's a change of ownership, I'd do it before. Change ownership, so it's something you'll have to do as part of that CO for that, that structure.
And if it's a new rental, it can't be rented, so.
Probably not. Probably not. Uh, I didn't read that specific part of it, though.
Yeah, it's not in the, nothing to talk about.
I think we referenced the state's rules in there, that were a little bit stated. I'll have Jimmy take a look at that, ask questions on that.
The shared service.
I thought so, yeah, I thought so, yeah. Our next ordinance would be twenty twenty-three dash zero one two, which is also chapter one forty-nine, the code requiring certain rental units to obtain mercantile license, supplementing ordinance, regulation of short-term rentals. So we made some significant changes to that. Um, do you have that real quick?
Background.
Yeah, just, just the-
Yeah, the, the changes that were made subsequent to the last discussion was to add, uh, a clarification that if a property owner designates a local agent as essentially a property manager, receive service and, and to, uh, receive any complaints about the property, that they have to submit that, uh, information to the construction firm of the office. Uh, the second change was to make it clear that the, uh, identification required of anybody, uh, renting in eighteen, they have to be eighteen or older and provide ID upon request. So again, if the, if police or construction officer called to a property because there's a problem, then the owner is going to be required to present proof that they rented it properly to, to an adult. Um, and then I think eight-
Twenty. Oh, yeah.
Twenty-one, I'm sorry.
Twenty-one.
Um, there was a third thing that, that escapes me right this second.
The posting?
Now, we had that. We, I think we, we did the one-bedroom fees for one or more days, and then we did the two-bedroom with that fee of seven fifty, and that's not less than two days, and three or more bedrooms was a thousand dollars, and that's, uh, minimum of five days for the larger unit.
Those might have been the only, only things.
They're the ones that are highlighted in my-
Yeah, that's it.
Information I had, okay. So those will be the changes that we, and, you know, this is a work in progress, I'll say. We're going to see how this works this summer. Um, there's been discussion of, of changing this up a little bit seasonally.
Right.
Um, and, and that's something we're amenable to. We want to see how this works.
So the limits again are no, uh, one, one, one night for one, one bedroom.
Correct.
Two-night minimum for any, for a two-bedroom.
Yes.
And then anything larger, three-bedroom or larger, is a five-night minimum.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Government ID, twenty-one years.
And these are-
Yep.
These are things that we've got, we've gotten from other municipalities in a lot of ways.
Correct.
These are, these are other beach towns adopted, and from feedback from our local residents from the last meeting. We'll see what-
So, all right, so those-
There'll be a time to comment after the-
If, if I may just add one comment that, for everybody to keep in mind, given where we are, uh, with the season fast approaching, uh, it's likely that there's some properties that have already entered into rental agreements for, uh, for this coming season. And I think it would be appropriate that if, uh, someone has rented something before the effective date of this, that doesn't comply with these new rules, that we accept that if they can provide proof that it was done before the effective date.
Correct.
So, yeah, so we just want to make
I agree.
the public aware that
Yep.
from an enforcement standpoint, that'll be our approach to it.
Time of decision rule, if they've got their permits already in hand.
It's a good point.
Pass the ordinance, they're, they're, they're under the old rules, not-
Right.
But I think the majority, and and we had that discussion with Jim, uh, Jimmy Agnesino this week, that he's, he's going to tell them to hold off, anyone that came in this week, they're holding him off until after this meeting. After the ordinances are passed.
For licenses.
For licenses, yes. All right, so ordinance, public hearing and adoption, we'll have ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six, which is chapter one fifty-three regarding violations, penalties for operation of motorized bikes, bicycles. We think we've talked about that. There'll be a public hearing on that this evening in adoption, hopefully. Next one is twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven, which is chapter seventy-nine, section seven regarding violations, penalties for having animals on the boardwalk. Again, similar, we've had, have open, pub, public comment on that. Twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight, chapter one oh five, section fifteen, regarding violations, penalties for unleashed animals. Again, we've had significant comments on, on that in preparing that ordinance, and then we will, um, have open, open comment on that this evening.
There was an incident today, actually.
Yeah. Um, resolutions and contracts, we will adopt resolutions by consent, twenty twenty-three dash one five four through one sixty-eight, with the addition of one sixty-nine and one seventy, and we'll go through each of those in the next few minutes. So resolution one fifty-four is enter revocable license agreement concerning property located sixty-seven seventeen Atlantic Avenue, block seventy-five, lot five point oh one. Um, there's an encroachment, Ed, this is, this was, um, I believe this was steps. Yeah, oh, this was the bow windows, yes, I'm sorry. This was planters and a, and a bay window above the, the first floor elevation. It's the new renovations that are happening down Atlantic Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Recommended by the planning board. We'll go, we'll do that. Resolution one fifty-five is state of New Jersey, accepting retirement of, of James Goss. Um, Jim's been a longtime employee of the city, he's building inspector.
Yeah.
Um,
I can't even picture the city without him. It doesn't work.
Ed, I'm, I'm with you. Um, he's, uh, he's going to be missed. He, he's here every day, um, working with our building office and inspecting properties, so he's going to be slowly missed. But good luck to him, we will certainly miss him. Now, if you see him in the hallways around town, please miss as well. Uh, June first will be his-
Wow.
Thanks, sir.
That's the end of the year.
It is, it is.
They're the pretty year.
More than that. Yeah. Twenty-three, thirty. Uh, resolution, the next one up is resolution one fifty-six, uh, which is naming official towing companies for Ventor City. Went faster than I thought. There we go. So it's, uh, Atlantic Citywide Towing, Providence Towing Recovery, and Providence owner be the, uh, the three tow companies that we'll work with. And I think we've had them in the past, that's not a change, so. Um, next up is New Jersey, is the, uh, one fifty-seven, resolution authorizing adoption of the city event emergency operations plan. I know Donna and Chief Cahill have worked on that. Um, are there any questions on that? Because Donna is here, if there are. Now, I reviewed it with her last week or so. They had a meeting today on this as well, so we're making sure we're compliant for emergency operations. We updated it in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three. Any questions back here?
Another COVID? That, we're getting something like that.
Does this happen with any future pandemic operations, or is this more focused on emergency events?
That for us.
Some of that, just a second, sorry. Excuse anybody. Here you. Is the air conditioner even working? Feels like it's-
Better in the back.
Better in the back, nice.
The emergency operation plan that you have before you is for, um, for us, for emergency management, how we handle everything. New Jersey State Police has now changed that we have to be recertified every two years instead of every four years. So that's why the new one is coming up now. The COCAG plan is what, um, we have for contingencies during something like COVID.
Awesome. Thank you. So we're good there? Resolution one fifty-eight is authorizing mutual aid memorandum of understanding between the city of Margate and Longport and the city of Ventnor. This is our says the brining, I'll do it right.
Right.
No, this is also emergency management.
Oh.
Yeah. One fifteen, so this one is a need facilitate mutual assistance between those three municipalities. An MOU was prepared to define working relationship between those three municipalities, system preparing for disaster situations at all levels, so this is part of our emergency management plan.
Right.
Good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Resolution one fifty-nine is a change order, or the final change order for the Ventnor Gardens Plaza Concrete Improvements. It is a decrease in the amount of fif- just about, just over fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, so that was good work on, on keeping that project under budget. Um, did a lot of curbs and gutters and handicap ramps in that area. Uh, following up through the South Jersey Gas work on those streets and repaving it, so we took the, the opportunity to fix a lot of our gutters, while the South Jersey Gas was going to go to pay those. Been a lot of work out there. We brought it in under, under budget, which is good. Questions there?
Nope.
Resolution one sixty is, um, this is a county of a second joiner agreement, allowing the city of Egg Harbor City to withdraw as a participant, including New Jersey American Water Company, Inc., as a new participant. So Egg Harbor City is pulling out of the, of water, wastewater treatment, and they're going to have American Water run their utility for them.
They have to solve the, the toll.
Yeah, they did. Yeah, this pulls them out of it, puts, puts, uh, New Jersey Water in.
So this is the sewer service agreement between the Atlantic County Utilities Authority and the participating municipalities, of which there are about, I think, thirteen, and then one private utility, now show private utility.
Yep.
Um, and this original agreement dates back probably to the late sixties or the early seventies, and it just spells out all the responsibilities and obligations of both sides. So with Egg Harbor City being sold, you're basically replacing the name with, um, them with American Water.
Got you.
And I'll have to recuse myself.
Right. That's, we want to take that separate. You can just say it, that I'm recusing from one sixty, okay? So, you know, just making note of that. Next resolution is one sixty-one, that is authorizing seasonal part-time employment for the city of Ventnor. We're hiring some of our summer guys that you'll see in the yellow shirts running around doing cleanup. Um, they assist our guys in, in almost every department, so um, they're a key component of our summer, summer work in the city. I'm sorry?
This is our beach bench.
Seasonal part-time?
Yeah, this is for two, um-
Okay, so the other ones are the ones we're- Okay, so the other ones are the ones we're adding at the end.
Yes.
I apologize. So these are our beach beds checkers. Okay. This is uh. Zoe uh. The Meadow and Jack Paddock.
Yes.
The beach better.
Job that's more difficult than you might think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're they're actually gonna be assistant supervisors. One of them only gonna work weekends. She's still a student.
All right, great. Thank you. Next is one sixty two, authorizing mayor to execute a shared service agreement between Atlantic County Improvement Authority. And the city of Ventnor participation in the countywide lead based paint inspection. Rented dwelling units program. That's what I talked about before. So that's, that helps share the services with with all the municipalities. Uh, in our county. Any questions there?
Nope.
Resolution one sixty three is authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Ventnor Pier Shack LLC and the city of Ventnor. This will allow that group to take where the old pier master space was on the pier building and operate a snack um shack out of that. They'll also provide coffee on the beach in a uh a cart type. Um, structure that they'll walk up and down the beach. Think they're gonna do two.
Right.
Um, walk up and down the beach. You can get iced or hot coffee. You'll be able to get coffee at the snack stand as well as cold sandwiches and things like that. And so we hope, they are hoping to be open. Memorial Day, pushing it.
Right.
They're trying.
Yeah, the the carts they don't expect to have until the middle of June, but the snack brother shooting for the Memorial Day weekend.
Okay.
Good. Still plenty of summer. It'll be a busy uh operation.
Yep.
I I think we would, I think once we get a feel for that, we should start to look at some traffic control on that. Here, maybe there's, there's gonna be a conflict with people going on to that. Here, I think, and congregating around the entrance. So. I think we just have to observe it and see if there's anything that we can do. Add trash cans, things like that.
Yep, agreed. I definitely had trash can. We already talked about that.
Yeah.
Yep, good.
This was something I think the two of you had talked about for a while.
Since we built that building.
Yeah.
Even before.
The administrator.
Even before.
And began working on it and I'm appreciative of Tom for bringing it home all the way.
Yeah. Yeah, did a good job negotiating. That was well done.
It it really isn't a budget. Well, it's not gonna help the budget in a way. It's just gonna be a a something that adds to the. The reasons for people to come to Ventnor and it's gonna be, it's the near the bathrooms. It's it's near our our landmark pier. It's really, I think, gonna be a huge success. I.
And we are getting some revenue from it, but it's not balancing.
No, it's not balancing.
All right, we're all good with that one. Next is one sixty four. It's awarding a contract to Arthur Henry Inc. For sewer main replacement and oh at Oakland Avenue and Winchester Avenue not to exceed twenty four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. We had a sewer line issue there and we've hired Arthur Henry to come in and repair that. We had three bids, uh Arthur Henry, Seashore Associated Mechanical and Lafayette Utility, all within a about a two thousand dollar. Range of each other, so pretty good pricing there, so. About fifty linear feet of eight inch sewer mains being replaced. Troublesome location because Winchester Avenue in that area is concrete.
Hmm.
That makes fun. We're good with that one. Resolution one sixty five, awarding a contract for the installation of mini split HVAC system. At the Department of Public Works main office through the Camden County Educational Commission Cooperative Pricing Agreement. To CM three building solutions amount not to exceed twenty three thousand seven hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. CM three has been helping us with this building and getting it working properly. So I'm kind of happy that they they got this contract. Um, right now, I think there's a. Well.
Except this room maybe.
Except tonight.
Well, that's why we have them, right?
Exactly.
They have to think cool.
Think cool. Think cool thoughts, right? The um, right now that room is air conditioned by a uh. Off a window wall unit, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. You do anything in your office head? Stay with that little window unit? Okay.
Ah.
Maybe swap out with Ernie every other day on the hot days. Um, so that that's gonna be something that's out there and that'll be more, a lot more efficient. It wasn't part of our ESIP, but it's something that that'll help out there. We did replace the boiler out there as part of the ESIP program.
Improving that building to air conditioning at this date doesn't, I mean, it's maybe a little overdue.
Yeah, well, we had, like I said, with the wall unit.
Yeah.
Window unit. Uh, resolution one sixty six is uh. Supporting electric vehicle charging station grants. We're looking for grant monies. Um, seventy five thousand dollars to help us provide municipal spaces. Uh, the one right out here is part of that, I believe. We'll get some money back for that.
Mm hmm.
To help with electric charging stations for the public. One sixty six is awarding engineering design and construction management services for water main replacement and roadway reconstruction. On Lafayette Avenue not to exceed fifty two thousand five hundred dollars. Read a little bit about that. Electric vehicles. This one's going to de Blasio Associates. This is the design. Or replacement of the water main and and service laterals on Lafayette Avenue from bout four to Washington. And we're awarding that to de Blasio. And Ed, we're gonna look at the sewer out there. At the same time. Okay, good. We might have to add that at the end, but we're gonna look at the sanitary sewer as well. And one sixty eight is engineering design and permitting services Winchester Avenue bulkhead replacement. Uh, Jackson Avenue to Marion not to exceed forty nine thousand nine fifty. And that would be being awarded to Arthur Chu Engineering. We had a range of proposals there ranging from the lowest at at just under fifty K. To the highest at a hundred and sixty six thousand.
Hmm.
So obviously went with, and Arthur Chu is a good engineering specialist for bulkheads. Uh, and the this project is part of the grant that, different grants. That we won't be paying any for this two million dollar project.
Wow.
It's uh good work from from Jim Rettell getting those grants for us.
Absolutely.
Paying for that. And then we were adding two other ones. One is resolution one sixty nine, amending the shared services agreement with Atlantic County for Seekan Island Brine Services. We are gonna be the lead on that. We were able to obtain through a lead grant, leap grant, excuse me, um, a. Basically a dump truck and a a brining machine that attaches to that. And then we will brine the county road, which is Wellington. Um, Dorset and Ventnor Avenue through the municipalities, all the way down through Longport. And we will be able to use that same vehicle and machinery to do our streets as well. Um, and we will get the brine from the county at no cost, correct? Good. That's a good program. Um, last one is one seventy, authorizing the seasonal employment city event for public works departments. We are hiring. Some guys for our seasonal work, looking for the names. They're not easy. Here we go. Um, basically Joe Calvi on beach sanitation, Mike Tanza also beach sanitation. Like Milton Burger Beach Sanitation, Kelly Carr Recreational Aid and Diane Burckbeck Recreational Aid. Got all them?
Yep.
All right. And that's all the resolutions. That was a lot. Then we'll have our bills and payroll. We have any discussion items? On the agenda tonight?
None and I'm aware.
Okay. You have any, I didn't bring anything tonight on that.
Um, not not for. No, um, just brief, I do have one, um. Two little, two small items that might be for discussion. Um, parking at the farmer's market, the notion of having them. Um, uh, as advertising free parking during farmer's market hours.
Right.
So and that and after talking to the farmer's market and talking to the chief police. Um, he doesn't feel it's a problem and and the farmer's market agrees and actually requested that both be used, both the beachfront and. The um, uh, the the municipal lot, um, because a lot of the municipal lots can is sometimes used by the. The vendors as well. So I think it's just a good. Pol- just a, just a friendly policy to to help encourage people to come to our farmer's market. It's not gonna be a problem with enforcement because it will be listed and. Posted that it's during farmer's market hours. Eight to twelve. So after twelve o'clock, the same parking rules will come into effect there. We all, we can just do that.
Yeah.
We're agreement.
All right, resolution together for um, the next meeting.
Yeah. And um. Just to. To something that Chief mentioned to me in the hallway, uh, along with all the other things that the police department does. Thousand, close to fifteen hundred calls for service a month. Um, and on a neat, on a slow month, they also assisted in a birth today on Harvard Avenue. You did it, oh.
Okay. Well done. Well done.
You wanna add some detail to that?
I got there first. Twelve officers happen to be right there. Uh, mom and baby are doing well over at Mainland. That's great. Great. Please thank the officer force.
Good, good.
Heights or the side?
Just, just another example, those guys have to be ready for everything. They see people and they're in the best and the worst and and they and they and I appreciate everything they do.
As, as do I, as do I. Great job. What's that? Yes, I agree.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll do something. Uh, with that, we will open it up to the public on comments that, on items that we've already discussed this evening. So if you have any comments on anything that was on the agenda, please step forward. Um, make your comment and we'll see if we can get an answer for you. If not, we'll get back to you. Um, please step forward, come on up. State your name and address and make your comment.
Hi, my name's Eileen Lerner, uh, five oh one three Ventnor Avenue. And I I'm just here to express my opposition and concern with the short term rentals. Um, and the changes in those policies. Um. We are, we are right in the grid of Nashville, Oakland. And Ventnor, they're very tight streets. Um, and I just feel that. Part of the reason we have a home in Ventnor is it's not a transient community. Um, having one, two, five night rentals. Is changes the dynamic of our neighborhood. Um, I have concerns for parking availability, trash, safety, noise. All of it. And um. It's my opinion that if someone's looking for a one night rental, there's no shortage of hotels within one mile of here. And it changes the dynamic of the neighborhood significantly to do that. Um, and uh. I know in our little community of homes that. Were recently built in the past five years, our homeowners stocks, we specifically have in there that. There's no short term rentals uh under, I think it's four or six months. Um, we really encourage. Permanent residents and to have consistency in the neighborhood and I just wanted to express. My concern about that.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
So you understand we're trying to lim- this new ordinance will limit it.
So right now, there is a one night, there's a one night, you could, like every, every unit in the city and there's two hundred and fifty units in the city and they're growing. Like the country is, there's more short term rentals than there are hotels in the country and it's not something that we have control over whether a. Private resident decides to rent their home, but we can enforce some of the rules that we're addressing today, which is actually to limit. The numbers of for of the the extend the number of time that those people are staying. So I think we're, we have similar goals. But Ventnor has always been a summer rental community. I've lived here for thirty year, twenty, thirty years.
Well.
And and even before then, um, summer rentals were something that it's always had. I and I I encourage you to.
For a single night or has been allowed for a single night rentals.
The only place they can do a single night after we adopt this ordinance would be a one bedroom s- uh studio kind of a place. Anything more than one bedroom would be a minimum of two. And if you get larger than that, three bedroom, a minimum of five night.
Well, we've seen what's happening on along Nashville, for example. Um, you know, there's multi unit and basement dwellings and we have a triplex on Oakland. Where every floor is split up as separate rentals. And so we have houses with twenty kids in there. Parting and making noise, but technically it's three separate rentals. And I I mean, I think it's just encourage, it's encouraging. You know, rather than than looking at how can we structure a minimum of a weekly rental, I I. It, I'm not certain, but uh I think that's what Margate has in place. Um, to discourage the hotel like stays. Um, and encourage more of a family stay or a longer stay. So there's less uh turnover.
We we think we're doing that with what we're proposing.
But that's a lot of the thinking behind it.
One night rental in the larger homes.
So that one night.
With twenty people for one night or two.
But you're still allowing, you know, one night rentals.
In a one bedroom.
In a one bedroom.
Home.
And are there occupancy limits in those?
Yeah.
Two people.
Two people.
And how is that enforced? I mean.
By the licenses that they purchase. And by our code office. So I encourage you, if you find.
We just, you know, call when we see. You know, twenty college kids coming out of the basement apartment.
Every year, we get a particular home or three that have. What people, people in neighborhood either may believe or see or in um as a problem and then. That you can call the police office, the non emergency or non emergency number I would recommend. And then they they will send an officer out on complaint. And um.
And how many complaints does it take before the? The uh owner of the property is addressed or is no longer able to rent? What are the?
So if if it's not just a complaint, it has to, they have to be proven guilty of what they've done. So if they fail on a violation. Then we can pull their mercantile license and they can't operate anymore.
So if you see something, the faster you report it, the better because the it's actually what the complaint results in is what's the factor and. Um, we were actually the administration that brought into like a license. So before that, before that, there was no. There was no repercussion for the city to have. So we instituted a license for everyone that does a short term rental so that we can then take it away from the people that.
As opposed to just not allowing rentals that are.
You can't not allow.
Can't not allow.
I mean, we could, we could ban them. There are towns in the state that have banned them.
Yeah.
That's not gonna happen in a shore community.
Yeah.
It's just not going.
Uh, that's not practical for the.
That that is our way to keep our businesses functioning in the winter time.
For the short term rentals?
Yes.
Yeah.
Hi, uh, Jamie Casey, four oh two North Suffolk. Um, so I am a full time resident homeowner here in Ventnor. I would like to speak on the ordinance regarding the electric bikes on the boardwalk. I purchased my electric bike from our local Ventnor Bike Shop last year. My husband Jeremy and I, we ride ours on the boardwalk every weekend. Um, when we ride our bikes on the boardwalk, we're going probably ten miles per hour. We are always courteous. Um, we don't, you know, weave in and out of traffic. I have seen bikers on non electric bikes going faster and more reckless than me and my husband have. We've been able to increase our bike rides from five miles a day to fourteen, fifteen miles with our electric bikes. Um, you know, it'd be unfortunate for us not to be able to enjoy the boardwalk with our fellow residents simply because of the nature of the type of bike we have. I even offered and turned off the battery completely on my bike before. Um, which you can do, you can ride it with pedal assist and completely turn it off and ride it non motorized. And I was still kicked off the boardwalk, even it was completely turned off and me pedaling fully on my own. Um, as far as I know, and I'm pretty active with like Ventnor social media and everything, I have not heard of an accident. On a regular bike or an electric bike in the five years I've lived here. Um, I personally don't feel comfortable riding on the street for a long time, especially in the summer between texting and driving. People opening their doors. Um, I reviewed the police blotter for last twenty twenty two, April to September. There were twenty eight DUIs. Um, people arrested for DUIs. So I don't feel that it's fair to have people on electric bikes simply have to ride in the street. Um, with people that are potentially intoxicated, especially in the summertime. Just because of me having an electric bike, that does not seem safe.
So you you understand that that motorized vehicles on the boardwalk have never been permitted.
All right, I mean, I at least from what I've experienced. I've never gotten a ticket. The police officers usually just shrug at us and say, okay, pedal. They say just.
That will, that will no longer be the case.
Okay, well, that's unfortunate. Um, in regards to that, um, I'm also an orthopedic physician assistant. I have a lot of patients who would not be able to ride on the boardwalk on their or anywhere without their electric bike due to their injuries. Um, I actually started a petition online in regards to the blanket ban of the electric bikes here in Ventnor. Um, I had some comments from some Ventnor residents. One resident said that they have a spinal cord injury. They feel that the bike, the um road is scary due to their injury. They don't feel that they'd be able to ride in the road and they really enjoy being able to use the boardwalk. They wouldn't be able to ride without their electric bike. Another Ventnor resident said that they have PTSD.
Hold it. You have to give us your experience, not someone else's.
I did.
Okay, and that's what I'm asking you to stick with.
I mean, could I please speak first without being interrupted?
You're, 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 those people that you're speaking about are not here for us to ask questions.
So I gave my experience and stating that I started a petition and I'm just reading some of the Ventnor residents comments. Those people clearly couldn't be here, especially because they're stating they have.
I think what the mayor is saying is that uh from a, from a legal standpoint, if you're going on record and saying someone else's opinion. It's not really fair to that other person. So you really, if you can keep your comments to your opinion. And I think your, but your, your, your points are well taken. Nobody um wants to limit or take away some uh some rights or uses or enjoyment. enjoyment, but there's never been an ability, there's not, motorized vehicles have never been allowed on the boardwalk. And in the recent years and with that same local bike shop sells five to one number of electric bikes to, to regular bikes. And the, there's, and it's, and there's, there's a, there's a pattern, especially when we grow from 10,000 to 30,000 people of it being dangerous during the walking hours and beyond the bike hours.
Has it been exhibited to be dangerous?
There's usually a, an accident. I mean, I can ask the police chief to comment, but there's been at least an accident a year.
On an electric bike specifically?
On, uh, bikes going, and so on, on bikes and sometimes-
So any type of bike, correct?
So, so I'm open to the idea of enforcing speed if that's, but that's a very difficult proposition.
Well, I don't feel that they enforce anything right now, so.
Well, well, th- this is-
And I did speak on my experience, so I'm not just reading people's comments.
And that's why I was-
I'm trying to gather comments from the community for people who could not be here.
But understand they have to come here for that. They can do it on Zoom. They can do it in person.
We're not trying to argue with you. It's, it's just, it's just the way this, this way government works.
But it's not fair to say I didn't speak about my own experience because I certainly did.
That's not what I meant to say. I asked you not to speak about someone else's experience. I heard yours. I agree with you. You are being penalized because of the people that don't act properly.
And there's just as many people that are concerned about being hit by somebody that's at it in, in the evening when they're, when they are going by it, at, at, when people are only using the throttle. And that happens as well. I live here and I'm on the boardwalk as well. And I see people go on all sorts of motorized vehicles well above 12, 15, sometimes higher.
And I've seen people, and I agree, there are people that do that and they ruin it for everyone.
In Ocean City where there's much more people, where they were triple the size of Ventnor, you can't ride your bike, your electric bike on that boardwalk.
Okay.
Ever.
Sure.
So-
But I, in regards to that, I've seen people on their regular bikes in their biking gear, like they're training for a marathon, speeding down the boardwalk.
And, and yeah, I, I get it.
I mean, so how is it fair to ban us, but not those people? And they get to ride and cause accidents, which you just said, you've heard of accidents happening on regular bikes. But we don't get to use our bikes that we purchased from a local Ventnor Bike Shop. Because-
Can use them, just not on the boardwalk.
So I have to ride in the street with people who are getting arrested for DUIs, texting and driving, crazy traffic in the summer. But people on their regular bikes don't have to.
Well, there's bike and versus car accidents throughout the city. The most common one is on Dorset Avenue where there's some blind spots and people don't follow the right traffic rules. But there aren't, uh, there isn't a, uh, there's traffic, there's bicycle pedestrian studies that show there aren't, uh, there isn't any one particular place on Atlantic Avenue that has a great number of bicycle accidents, bicycles versus cars.
I would like not to be that statistic though, you know? It just seems unfair to completely blanket ban them is all I'm saying. And I understand that they've never been allowed technically in the past. All I'm saying is that, um, my husband and I have noticed we've never been formally penalized for it. And I'm not saying that it's correct or anything, or that they, you know, and maybe they should have if that was the, the law. But usually we're just told, okay, don't speed, pedal appropriately. Thank you. And let us go on our way. And so I don't see why that can't continue to be the case.
Because of the people that don't abide by it. It's just, it's a problem with people speeding on these bikes. It's a problem.
Yeah, for the, for the elderly that want to walk, that don't follow the lanes.
That want to ride their electric bikes because they can't walk.
There's both sides of that story as well. So where did you land? Do you land on what you can enforce? Or do you land on ignoring it?
I just feel like it hasn't been enforced at all regardless.
Not, so who-
Well, that, that's really the point here though, is that you're looking, the commissioners are looking for enforcement and increasing the penalties for violations. The prohibition has been in existence since at least 1979. So to your point, Mr. Cribble, you pointed out, they, they've never been permitted. You're not changing that. What you're changing is the penalty for violating this ordinance.
Right.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Roger Lichtman, L I C H T M A N, 5017, uh, Ventnor Avenue. And I want to address, um, what was it? Ordinance 12, which is the short-term rental. And you guys I know have a tough spot because somewhere we're looking for a compromise. And I'm sure you've already heard it with everything else. So I'm not going to go into the traffic, the nuisance calls to the police, the litter, all that other stuff. Property values potentially going down, um, parking and everything else. However, there seems to me to be a bit of a conundrum here because we put zoning ordinance in for a purpose. And what we're looking at here now is to go from what the established zoning is, that I'm sure that we paid people for to come up with, and we went back and forth on that. And now this is flying in the face of what the zoning is supposed to do. Because on most of the areas, it's double R, which is residential. And now we're turning them in to potential, every house can be a Motel Six. And I see that as a problem, um, in terms of the short-term. In addition to that, um, I was fortunate, I have lived here as a, um, as a renter for four years and now for the last two years to buy. And when we bought, we got a tax, um, uh, moratorium, uh, portion of the tax on 30% for seven years. And I was told that the purpose of that was to spawn development in Ventnor City. So that it becomes better, more people want to build, more people want to build better. And, and of course, you know, uh, i- i- and just make this a better place to live. And now what I see this as doing, and I understand that it's a dilemma and it's an unintended consequence. If, if Airbnb never existed, this probably wouldn't be an issue. But now it's an unintended consequence of Airbnb that now all of a sudden we're spot zoning and we're flying in the face of the zoning plan. And we're flying in the face of what we are trying to do with the tax rebate. So, I mean, maybe the solution is not allowing one nights. Maybe the solution is one or two week minimums. Um, and then you can go on Airbnb and advertise to your heart's delight. But if you've got one family there or even single people there or whatever, but they're there for a minimum of a week. I think that that changes the dynamic of what's going on and I think it's worth considering. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys good?
Yes.
Jeremy Casey, four oh two North Suffolk. Um, I'm an e-bike rider, just like my wife here and frequently ride on the boardwalk. Yes, I know it's against the law. A lot of you may see me as the problem, but I don't think that's the case. If there are so many e-bike riders on the boardwalk, that to me says people are embracing it for both leisure and utility. The town does not have very good bike lanes anywhere in town. Riding on Atlantic Ave, the most sustained bike lane, um, barely wider than a car door. I don't know about you, but when I have to avoid a car door, I don't want to swerve into traffic. Now that's the only place, I'm sorry, excuse me. Um, unfortunately for me, another bike is not an option. So that's limiting my riding ability on the boardwalk. I want the boardwalk to be used as many people as possible for a fair and equitable use of a public path. I think there are far better options equitable for all than a blanket ban on e-bikes. All of the complaints I've heard of having e-bikes on the boardwalk have to do with how fast they go. This is the issue that should be enforced instead of a blanket ban on e-bikes. The town considered e-bikes as standard bicycles. The bicycling ordinance could be applied, which covers reckless li- riding and penalties such as confiscation. Why can't this ordinance be enforced for safe riding for all? I have not seen any data presented on why this is an actual problem. I ask this council to review and evaluate the data and make rules, new rules based on it. Like you said, this ordinance has been in place since the eighties, right around the eighties. Is that right? Um, we're amending it now. Let's do it the right way this time. Um, how many tickets have been written? How many people have been written tickets as repeat offenders to justify this? Why does this town see this as a problem? Where is the data justifying this issue? How many e-bike accidents occurred last year? How many regular bikes? Was e-bikes at a higher incident rate? Um, was e-bike a contributing factor? Or was it, would a careless ride on a standard bike have the same incident? Can you provide the data that says this is a problem and that the calls is actually personal electric vehicles? The way I see it, this amendment has not been demonstrated to have been necessary and current enforcement traces have not been properly utilized. Furthermore, I don't believe e-bikes are the problem, but careless riding is. I've seen Lance Armstrong create far more dangerous situations on the boardwalk and have been passed countless times by him, multiple times on the same day at higher speed. An e-bike's speed is controlled based on the rider's inputs. And I'm sure most people on the boardwalk would never know a responsible rider is passing them. I ask that the council reevaluate this issue and make a data-driven decision on the safe operation and use of e-bikes on the boardwalk. Think of the parent who wants to take their kids on a nice bike ride, but can't pedal against the wind with a child, child trailer behind them. You really think they're a problem? How about the old person that can't pedal? Do they really deserve a $1,500 ticket? What I ask is that you reevaluate your complaints, calls and incidents that you've had on the boardwalk. And take a look at what we can do to actually fix that problem instead of blanket banning things. Maybe a better compromise would be allow the use of bikes longer on the weekends. I'm sure you guys have all been on the boardwalk, six AM to 12 noon, the worst time to ride a bike on the boardwalk. Crowds as far as you can see. You go up there at one, 1:30, you're clear, you're good to go. I think it's silly to have that kind of restrictions on bike riding. We opened up riding times that also may help congestion, congestion on the boardwalk and incidences further reducing them. I would like the council to reconsider their blanket bans and develop a safe, equitable and welcoming policy on their use. I want to see this town continue to do more as a bike-friendly community, eliminate traffic and, um, promote the safety of cycling.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any data that supports this?
Um, if you give us your email, we can, we can start a conversation about that and you can write it down. Or you can, you can read it to me.
No, I don't want to read, I don't want a bunch of junk.
Not over the web. Yeah, the recommendation from our police department was no bikes on the boardwalk at all. So just so you're aware of that.
Yeah, I think that's silly too.
Well, it's not silly.
When, when is the issue?
We'll send you the data.
Where, when is the issue?
All day long, 24/7.
So to your point, I made two comments.
Go back out there so we can hear it, just so we can hear you.
So to your point, um, speed is yes, the issue. And also as, as our administrator said, we're not, we're not changing, uh, we're changing the enforcement, the ability for us to to take those people that are, that are repeat offenders. I'm open to the idea.
How many are there?
Uh, I don't have the data in front of me, but we can get it for you. But the, and, and also we, we have not enforced this on a, on a daily basis. So there, there hasn't been, it, we've got more complaints. And this is also as a, as a result of people. So your, your contention is, this is an example. I'm not saying this is, I'm just looking at it from another side of the story. Put yourself in someone else's shoes. In your mind, after one o'clock, it's a great time to ride a bicycle. For someone who wants to walk on the boardwalk, that's when they plan to walk on the boardwalk. And, and we've talked about, we've talked about those, those hours. Well, it isn't, if, it is if you talk to the people that we talk to.
The issue actually is the people who walk the wonderful walk is crossing the boardwalk.
And bicycles create a problem when people want to go to the beach and most people go to the beach between noon and 4:00 PM. So we, that's why the bikes aren't prevalent during that time.
Can you prove that?
Yeah, we, well, so not at, at 10, at 12 o'clock, we have 20,000 people that want to go to the beach all at the same time. 20,000 people are crossing the boardwalk from where they parked to go to the beach, and then they're going back and forth all day long. And so that's the, the reasoning behind not having bicycles on the boardwalk because you're, 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 you're creating a conflict in that traffic. And it's been that way for decades and maybe it's frustrating now.
So you're eliminating the cross-traffic, but literally the entire length of the boardwalk is totally congested and filled. I mean, when, yeah, during, during cycling hours on the weekend.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, right. In the morning. I, I agree. It's like trying to merge onto a highway. Right?
Some people are asking us to ban bikes completely.
Right.
Right, so, so-
I'm completely against that for the record.
Yeah.
All right, we have to move on because we do have other people. I should have said this before, we're supposed to limit this to three to five minutes. So we will try to keep to that, but I wanted to hear you guys because you haven't been here before. So I don't, we, we do appreciate your input. It's something that we're struggling with. We're going to try this and see if it works. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Next, please. Sir, come on out.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Motalewski. We live on Cambridge Avenue, just down the street. And, um, Cambridge is a very narrow street. There's parking on both sides. Traffic's unbelievable. The speeding is out of control. And, uh, we'd like to request that you look at the possibility of putting in the flashing sign, something to slow the traffic down, uh, with the speed limit showing. Uh, they have them all along where it says, so you're not speeding.
We rotate that around the city.
What is it?
We rotate that sign. It's a portable sign, believe it or not. Digital ones that tell you how fast you're going and say, thanks for being under 25. That's a portable sign. So we'll, we'll talk to chief and, and he'll see.
Or maybe they can, maybe they can put some warning sign, you know, slow down, whatever.
Which block of Cambridge are you, sir?
What is it?
Which block of Cambridge?
We're between, we're on Cambridge between Ventnor and Atlantic.
So you're right here?
Yeah, right down here.
All right.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it and, and certainly-
There have been many times when I park, go on, go out and the car goes whizzing by. One time I said, kind of like that, you know, slow down. And the guy, and suddenly I hear a screech, the guy stops, gets out and starts yelling at me, you know, saying, you're down here for the summer or whatever. Well, now we're living down here. He says, I go on the street all the time. Don't tell me how to drive. Okay, so I was intimidated by that and threatened. So anyway, so if there's anything that can be done to slow things down here.
You're getting the ball off.
The other thing is that, uh, some of us, uh, could use a handicap spot. And there are none on the, on the street.
Yeah, that's not something we'll, we'll do on a public street handicap space.
Something you can't do.
Yeah, we've had, we have numerous requests for that and it's not, just not, we can do one on a, on a street. Cause everybody would want one.
My second point is on the boardwalk, there doesn't seem to be any enforcement. Uh, there are dogs everywhere on the boardwalk. It says no dogs ever allowed on the boardwalk. I see them, they're on leashes mostly, some aren't. So I've seen some people over the years where their dog defecates on the, and they don't even clean it up. Um, there's no control on the skateboards. Uh, it says no skateboards ever. They're, they're all over the place. Uh, some of these skateboards that have a little motor on them. Uh, so it's very dangerous to walk on, on the boardwalk. Uh, I don't ride on the boardwalk in my bike anymore because I've been knocked down a couple of times. So, uh, you see the bike riders riding without holding on to the handlebars. They're looking at their phones. You know, you're gonna get, eventually you're gonna get hit. Okay, so, um, it would be nice to see the ordinances and the rules and regulations for the boardwalk enforced. Maybe there's, has to be fines. I don't know.
So that's one of the ordinances we're passing tonight.
What is it?
One of the ordinances we're passing this evening, two of the ordinances actually address just that. It increases the fines for having a dog on a boardwalk.
Right.
From $25 to the first fine would be 200. It would escalate from there.
Okay.
Um, same thing with, with the battery-powered bikes.
Have those ever been actually imposed?
It's, we're doing it tonight. We're, we're passing that ordinance tonight.
So it, it's enacted tonight, if I can just add to that. And then we have a police force that is, um, that is grows by five special officers in the summer, which are coming on, um, right around the same time when schools get out. So because some of those, those officers are either students.
Okay.
So you'll see that enforcement when you see those special officers
Okay.
on the boardwalk at the same time when our city grows in those areas.
Right, okay. So, um, is there a way to report if you see something?
Call the, the non-emergency, eight two two-
Two one oh one.
Two one oh one.
I can give you a card that has a number on it.
Okay, that'd be great.
You call that and they'll, they'll send a police officer up onto the boardwalk.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, on the rentals, the Airbnb, I'd never heard of that being in Ventnor. Now we're in St. Leonard's track. We've always understood that there are no rentals allowed in the St. Leonard's track, period. Right?
I don't, that's, first of all, that's not our rule.
Oh.
That may be in your deed because you're in the St. Leonard's track.
Might be in the St. Leonard's track.
Right. That's not something the city can enforce?
Oh.
I would say, I've, I've known properties-
But can the city allow? You wanted to allow these B and Bs?
So they're allowed now. We're trying to put some regulations on it.
Are they allowed within the St. Leonard track?
Again, there, there's no-
Which one takes precedent?
There, there's no different rules for, from a city standpoint in the St. Leonard's track. You may have deed restrictions on your property that were put on there by 120 years ago. By the St. Leonard's group.
Okay.
So that's not our, we cannot enforce deed restrictions on your property.
But there are summer rentals in St. Leonard's.
Absolutely.
There are people that rent their homes for summers, it's part of their private property. They're allowed to do that.
Okay. Um, and then I'll just leave you with this. I think that seniors and military veterans shouldn't have to pay to go on the fishing pier.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, it's free out to the first gate, the second gate, correct? Okay, all right, understand. Evening, Paul.
How are you?
How are you?
Good.
Paul Gigerich, one fifty two North Derby. First thing is congratulate the new mayor. Haven't seen you since.
Thanks. I missed you at cornhole on Monday.
I am a, a year round resident and an on premise owner with a duplex. And I've been renting my, uh, unit for thirteen years. I've never had a single disturbance or complaint about my renters. And I have nothing but five star reviews. And however, I recently had my first violation. One, one of the, one of the things I want to bring up is like. Clarity of, of the language in the old, uh, ordinance, I think pertains to the new ordinance. You'll, you'll hear my little stories, but. I had a, a fire outside of my house at Christmas, Christmas Eve that knocked out my utilities for three months. So the place was. Vacant, including me not being able to live there. Uh, but someone anonymously, uh, claimed that I was renting without a. A current mercantile license and without contacting me or otherwise verifying that to be the case, the city sent me a violation. So I heard, uh, someone, I think it was Lance, say earlier that. The violations need to be verified and I just want to enforce or, you know, and.
Right.
Uh, endorse that, like you need to have, you have to be proven guilty, not just have anonymous people. Uh, quoting to your, or, you know, re, reporting you. One other thing I was told was that you, you need a mercantile license to advertise for rent. Uh, with the, and that's, that's why my, my license was due. And I, I did have an Airbnb listing, but I didn't have any availability. But that's why I was, I was told I was in violation because of advertising for rent. The, the ordinance itself says prior to allowing occupation. So, you know, it's, it's a discrepancy in the field that, you know, there's, I guess what I'm saying is.
Let's take a look at it.
Okay. The other thing is, um, I got a license in October. In retrospect, it was dumb. Uh, because I paid the three hundred fifty dollar fee and then come January, they tell me this is the whole occasion, like why my license. Evidently expired was because. It around.
Yeah, it's not, it goes, starts January of each year.
Okay, so it's not prorated and it's not twelve months. It's just starts January. Well, I guess to be fair to people who would not otherwise. Uh, sign up in October is to make that clear that, you know, I never even listed it, never advertised it and never rented it. And three months later, I had to pay a, a, a new licensing fee. Also unclear to me is like, are the fees per unit or per property? Because it says here, rent residential properties. Body containing one, containing two, containing three. So is it?
So their bedroom, so there, if you have a three bedroom unit, you're renting three separate things, that's three units. You'd have three mercantiles for each of those. One, one for each, excuse me. So if you have a tri.
Duplex, he's a duplex.
No, no, I'm talking about, and if I have a, I have a duplex.
Right, you're renting one unit.
Right, right, right. If I rent, if I rent both units out, what does it be?
Then you need two mercantile licenses, just a separate, separate unit. That'll be my interpretation of that.
So if someone has ten studio, a building with ten studio apartments.
They're renting ten.
Is that, is that ten times the fee?
That would be my opinion. I'll ask Mark to, to chime in on it, but that's how I would read it.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's the way it's been enforced, but I'm just pointing out the ambiguity of it. It says per property, not per unit, per rental unit.
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
The other, the other thing I want to get to is, I, I don't, you know, last, last I heard that this, you were proposing a two night minimum and a five hundred dollar licensing fee. No, but what's new to me here is that you're talking about, it might have to be three bedrooms, but three bedrooms and five nights. The, you know, the problem is I understood a lot of people complaining for a lot of different reasons, but, uh, one problem was that people weren't staying long enough. You know, now, you know, people who stay in one bedrooms, one night's fine. People stay in two, two bedrooms. Three nights or no, I'm sorry, one, one night's fine, two nights fine. You get to three, it's five. And I don't, what is the rationale to me?
The larger units were encouraging house parties and that was a big problem for us. So that's why we looked at it. Our first shot at this was two nights across the board. And there was several nights of discussion here. Um, and one of the suggestions was to do it incrementally. And that's how Atlantic City does theirs. We look at their ordinance. And that was something that we all seemed to like. Um, and in our last discussion, that was something that seemed to. Allow some different options. Um, we've also discussed about changing things seasonally. We didn't do that in this ordinance. But that's something that we're looking at maybe down the road to do something different in the summertime and in the wintertime.
I was about to get to that, but I guess what I. You know, I, I mean, I heard Tim say earlier, like, you know, there were like one or two houses a year that have, you know, party problems or whatever. So however many three bedrooms or plus you have, it feels like we're all being punished in terms of fee and prohibitions.
We can't write only for one property. You have to write them for everybody.
I'm, I'm not, but well, except you're writing for, you know, different properties have different rules is what, is what, what it says.
We do, yes.
Right. So the other thing I would want you to know is that, uh, and it goes to, you mentioned seasonality a couple of times. I've always rented. Uh, no less than weekly in the summer. Again, I've been doing this for thirteen years.
Right.
Um, so I have no objection to five days in the summer, but in the off season, there is no market, virtually no market for.
And, and that's what we've been starting to hear.
Right.
So that may be something we might adjust.
Well, that's, that's my number one request is that, you know, if you, if you would speak to the seasonality of, uh, you know, in the summer, no objection. Lot of density, a lot of people, you know, whatever. But in the off season, you're literally just killing the business and. You know, the irony is that I think a lot of.
You just used the word that, that is critical in this whole discussion. And I think the gentleman over here brought it up as well. You're operating a business in a residential zone. We're amenable to that if you follow these certain rules. So we are, we are carving, carving out certain regulations that will. Try to, try to help some of the residents that live there and have to deal with the in and out all the time.
Right.
We understand our businesses need that in and out. We need those people to come in and stay for a few more nights to occupy our restaurant and things on off. Off season times.
Right.
Uh, we need these businesses to survive. Um, you know, we've been very lucky with businesses operating in our community in the last five to seven years. Um, we had a lot of open storefronts here before twenty seventeen.
Yep.
Uh, we're lucky to have very few empty buildings right now. We want to maintain that. We want to keep these businesses operating and doing well and staying open. So, um, with that, I, I think we're kind of running out of time.
Okay, just two, two, two more seconds, which is that, you know, if you can adjust it to, to, to be seasonal, that would be okay.
We're looking at it.
Um, we'll look at it.
But you know, we're, we're going to get through the summer. We, we need to get these, we're, we're adopting these tonight. We, we're taking your input, but we need to get these in place for this season.
And I, I thought this was going to be reviewed in there.
We've, we've been talking about this Paul for six months.
Oh, no, I know that. I've listened to a bunch of meetings.
Right, yeah, but this is the third time. This is the adoption.
So they're being adopted tonight?
Yep.
So then with no change.
They can, they could be changed, they could be changed or amended in the future as, but just like the bicycling.
Thank you. We've, we've all opinions about four times. All right, anyone else? Ben?
Daniel Oates again. Clearly, I just want to state for the record that clearly by adoption of this ordinance, Ventnor is legitimizing a non permitted use in a residential zone. And my opinion is that it's going to be hard to police. You're going to have people that are going to still rent Airbnbs and not have the, not have the, you know, the, the mercantile license. And then you have the issue now of clarity that we don't know, it's not clear in the ordinance. That if you have a triplex, you have to pay three times however many units there are and, and that would change based on the number of bedrooms in each unit.
I think that was pretty clear, Mark.
But I thought he said he. You believe so? Okay, so that needs to be clarified. The other issue is the, you know, the in, instance of these illegal triplexes. Where there is a basement apartment that clearly is an illegal apartment and, you know, they're, you know, they're not subject.
If, if they're illegal, they will not be permitted to run an Airbnb and.
And the entire unit or just in the illegal one?
In the illegal unit.
Right, well, right, clearly right now they're being rented because I can tell you the two units across from me.
You have, we, we're investigating that now.
Okay, and then the other issue is the house right next to me, one of the new homes, that's now being operated as an Airbnb and it's a brand new home. That would be three B, I think. Oh no, three A, North Nashville. Now those people moved to Texas and my neighbor is not here, but he has reported it to the police several times. Cause there've been a couple instances there. He was supposed to be here tonight and couldn't be here. So that unit I doubt has a rental license in it. So you're saying right now that people that are renting Airbnbs do have licenses or, or, or required to have a license even before the adoption of this ordinance?
Yes, the total of statistic in Ventnor is somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty Airbnbs and they're.
That are licensed.
Yeah, well, there's a code compliance, there's a post, post compliance is a program that we use that we pay to maintain. And monitor those that are advertising versus, and then they cross check it against who has.
So there will be a way to police.
It's been in place for two years.
Okay, so now is it going to be enforced?
It's been enforced for two years.
So I remember when I.
There's the, yeah, there's, there's rentals at the beach is nothing new here.
Understood.
Uh, and, and, and the fact that someone can build a house in Airbnb, it is also within their rights. Well, but the things that we can, yeah, the things that we can enforce, we are enforcing. Like licensing them, that's something that we're doing to actually quantify the number of people that are doing it and then hold them to a standard. If those people are repeat offenders and they go, and most of the complaints we hear are people getting in and out of their cars at midnight because they're going someplace. And those are usually at the, the shorter term limits, the one night stays in the larger homes. So part of this crafting of the ordinance was to, was to, that was the one real reaction for the police department was to. Limit the one night stays.
Understood.
Having a one bedroom is not having dozens of people show up with limousines at midnight. So that we're hoping will carve away that, 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 that thing that bothers number of residents in a number of neighborhoods. But, um, we, we, we can't. It would be unwise in my opinion.
Understood, one hundred percent, but.
To, to say that there are no Airbnbs in Vent.
Okay, but in, but in, in retrospect, you know, I owned a home here before and this is my second property here. My first home I owned, I rented it by the, by the month. And I had a rental license. I, you know, I had to get it inspected every year and that's fine. I'm not against seasonal rentals. I'm not against. Weekly or monthly rentals. Ocean City allows weekly rentals and they don't have the same amount of problems we're going to have here with one and two night rentals. But I, I feel that, you know, one week is in season and then maybe something off season would be acceptable, but. You know, if I wanted to live next to a motel, I'd move out to the Black Horse Pike. I mean, you know, clearly, you know, the, the end of the day, you know, if we're going to run hotels here. We should have a hotel tax on top of the mercantile license. You know, if you're trying to, you know, create revenue and encourage, you know, commerce in the city. Just wanted it on the record, you know, I hopefully will get the review this at the end of the season and see where we go to maybe modify it even more.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Anyone else?
Anne Sinclair from fifty four hundred thousand. Well, just a question on the e-bikes again. Um, is there a chance that handicap, they can use their handicap placards? I said, we, we've been coming down here, we've had a house for forty nine years. My husband is, he, he's disabled, so he cannot. He had surgery, he lost his femoral artery. He has to have two knee replacements, which he can't have because there's circulation, he might lose his leg. So he has an e-bike and it's the first time he can get out and, you know, he can't walk. You know, I mean, he can walk, but he can't walk a long distance. So he needs to ride. He gets out. To go on the boardwalk, to enjoy the boardwalk and he can't.
So we can certainly, we'll talk with, with first our attorney and then maybe the police department if we can carve out that handicap. Bag or something like that. The problem is then that's going to be abused.
Yeah, and, and too, I mean, I've been coming for forty nine years. I have eight kids. I would never, I would never allow my kids to ride on the boardwalk. Because even back then, it was dangerous.
Right.
You know, and it was, it was normal bikes. There wasn't an e-bike.
It's become worse with the e-bikes.
I know, it's all about speed. I mean, nine, ten, eleven and twelve year olds will knock you off, off your rocker.
Agreed.
You know?
The speed limit's fifteen.
It's about speed, not about, you know, some bikes are just as heavy as e-bikes. I mean, he has one, it's a pedal assist. So that's what I'm just saying, like, you know, even in the off hours, is that going to be able to? He's, is he going to be able to ride on the off hours? I mean, off season?
Right now, battery powered or motorized vehicles are not allowed on the boardwalk. That's been the case since the, since the seventies. You have not been able to ride because you used to have mopeds back then, right? So we're not changing that part of it. All we're doing is adding fines to it, significant fines. Right now it's twenty five dollars.
And, and mayor, it's not, it, this ordinance doesn't just regulate motorbikes. It regulates motorized vehicles.
Right.
Cars, taxis, trucks, motorcycles. How much difference is there between a motorbike and a small motorcycle? You know, how, how do you make that distinction if you even want to make that distinction?
Right.
It's a boardwalk for a reason. It's intended for pedestrians.
I understand her, her point of view with the handicap and we do allow scooters. We do allow the, the scooters for a handicap person is allowed up there.
Yeah, this, what, the three wheels?
Yes.
But you're looking for exercise for your health.
Yeah, I mean, he can pedal a little bit and then he has to do the pedal assist. Like we live in the heights, he has to come over the bridge. He cannot get up the bridge. He can't walk, push the bike up the bridge, a normal bike, you know, and he wants to get out there just to have some exercise, so he has to sit at home. Like he won't be allowed to, to go out. Oh, I mean, if, if it was handicap and he had a, his handicap plucker and, you know, he uses that. Just to, you know, take a ride, you know, I mean.
We will take a look at that and see if that's something we can look into.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I think speed and handicap are the two takeaways for something that we need to run by our police department and ourselves.
Great.
And this is really an ordinance that helps, gives us another tool and enforcement when we do get repeat offenders. But, um, I don't really foresee any, there's going to be more enforcement this summer. Once the specials get up and I think those two things, speed and, um, carving out some handicap. Are two things we can start to round table.
Okay, fine, appreciate it. Jim, is anybody on Zoom that needs, wants to comment?
Somebody on Zoom wishes to comment on any of the items that have been spoken about? Nope.
Thank you. I have a motion to close public portion.
Motion to close public portion?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We'll also need a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting, move into our regular meeting for this evening.
Motion to close workshop and move into regular session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, first item is approval of minutes, um, from our regular meeting on March twenty third as amended. Executive session on March twenty third and our regular on April thirteenth. The motion please?
Motion to approve minutes as described.
Second.
Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch Memento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria.
Yes. Need a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero nine, mending chapter seventy nine, section seven, already violations and penalties of operation of motorized vehicles.
Want to introduce ordinance as described?
Need a second? Uh, roll call please.
Mitchner Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch Memento?
Yeah.
Mayor Langria.
Yes. Another ordinance introduction, need a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero one zero. It's adding sections one seven, one ninety seven, eleven point one, A one through A four, littering and care containment of construction sites.
Motion to introduce ordinance zero one zero as described.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mitchner Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch Memento?
Yeah.
Mayor Yan Graham.
Yes. Introduce ordinance twenty twenty three, need a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero one one. This is, uh, municipal mending chapter one forty nine, registration of rental units to provide inspection requirements for lead based paints.
Motion to, uh, introduce ordinance zero zero, zero one one.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mitchner Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch Mento?
Yeah.
Mayor Yan Graham.
Yes. Another ordinance introduction, need a motion for ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero one two. Which, uh, requiring certain rental units, chapter one forty nine of the code of Ventnor City, requiring certain rental units to obtain mercantile licenses. Supplementing ordinance regulations of short term rentals.
Motion to introduce ordinance zero one two as described.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mitchner Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch Mento?
Yeah.
Mayor Yan Graham.
Yes. Public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero six and ordinance amending chapter one fifty three regarding violations and penalties of operations of motorized vehicles. Motorized bicycles, excuse me. Open that public hearing, motion please.
Motion. Motion to open public hearing for ordinance zero zero six as described.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, this is the public hearing in ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero six. I know we discussed it a lot already. This is a second chance at it, if you want to speak again. Please step forward.
Jeremy Casey, four zero two North Supple. Um, I have a question. Why is motorized bicycles now? And then you're adding the motorized vehicle? What's the difference in them?
There's a couple of different, um, sections of our ordinance that deal with motorized bicycles on the boardwalk. And then there's the fines are in motorized vehicles.
So what's the new one read?
It's not one of those clarifying and all of them, uh, the language in old one. So they're both, the both ordinances are already on the books. We're just adding the use of motorized bicycles to that chapter and section.
To what, on motorized vehicles?
So the motorized vehicle actually is. So the motorized vehicle actually is part of the fine, correct?
So both ordinances, the one that we're adopting tonight, the one we're introducing. If only is changing the fine. These ordinances have been on the book for years.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm, I'm curious why they both need to be done. I mean, even. As far as why they're a motorized bicycle ordinance and a motorized vehicle.
They can be enforced in different ways. You can anticipate how the. The ordinance may be broken, so they're both on the books for.
So you're amending broken ordinances instead of fixing the current ones? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's what we're doing. We're, we are amending the ordinances to make them agree with the current times.
Okay.
Anyone else? Jim, can you check online, please? On Zoom, please?
Anybody wish to speak on ordinance zero zero six? Please make yourself known. Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero six.
Motion to close. Public hearing on zero zero six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero six.
Motion to adopt. Ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero six as described.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Mitch or Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch or Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. I will need a motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero seven. This is chapter one fifty three, section five, regarding violations and penalties of operation of motorized bicycles. And this is a different section.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance zero zero seven as described.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone want to speak on this one? Jim, can you check on Zoom?
Anybody wish to speak on ordinance zero zero seven? Nope.
Hearing none. Anyone else in the audience? Hearing none, close, motion to close, please?
Motion to close ordinance zero zero seven. Public hearing.
Second, please.
You currently sitting on the couch or laying in bed?
What, Jim, what was that?
No, it was just a blip on something, nothing.
Okay, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero seven?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero seven as described.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Mitch or Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch or Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. I need a public hearing, a, a motion to open public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero eight. Uh, chapter one oh five, section fifteen regarding violations and penalties regarding unleashed animals.
Motion to open public hearing on ordinance zero zero eight as described.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This hearing, public hearing is open on this ordinance on unleashed animals. If anybody's in your audience, please step forward, state your name. Uh, we'll do the same at the same time on Zoom. Jim, anybody out there?
Anybody on ordinance zero zero eight? Nope.
Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close public portion on ordinance zero zero eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero eight?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero eight as described.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please?
Mr. Kribel?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Okay. Done with ordinances and we are looking at motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty three. Through one fifty four through twenty twenty three, one seventy. Did I get that right? And Maria is going to abstain from one sixty?
I'm recusing from one sixty.
One sixty, correct. Okay. Need a motion, please?
Motion to adopt resolutions one fifty four through one sixty eight as described.
Through one seventy.
Through one seventy, excuse me.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Mitch or Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch or Mento?
Yes.
Mary.
From one sixty.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Uh, can we get our bills and payroll, maybe?
Payrolls for this period, five hundred ninety five thousand, one hundred twenty two dollars, fifty eight cents. Payables for this period, seven hundred forty two thousand, one hundred sixty one dollars, seventy nine.
And motion to approve bills and payroll as stated by our CFO.
Motion to approve bills and payroll.
Second with the, we're choosing from nine sixty five, nine oh eight, three three seven dash oh four and two oh three dash oh eight.
Okay, that's noted. Roll call, please?
Mitch or Kribel?
Yes.
Mitch or Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Langria?
Yes. Uh, announcements and safety report, that's on our agenda. Um, safety report is, we don't really have any other announcements. I'll go to Commissioner comments. Anything from you, Maria?
No.
I just want to thank, um, Donna and Ed and Chief Fussner for their help on the block party. I think it was a great hometown event and I know it was a lot of work in the background. Um, things when. Thing, when things go smoothly, it's because all the details are taken care of. So thank you, Donna and everybody else for the cooperation that it took. Um. It's not a small thing and we ask a lot of the special events over the, over the course of the year, especially the summer. And, um, and it may, it puts the city in a great light. But I just want to thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Well done. Appreciate the efforts. You had nothing, right? I don't really have anything. I talked a lot about the last, our last meeting.
Yeah.
We'll have another meeting before the Memorial Day holiday. We'll probably announce a lot of things. There will be a, um, we'll put it on our website, a ceremony on Memorial Day. I'll follow that up on, on the twenty fifth meeting, but. There will be at the VFW this year. They didn't do one last year.
That's right.
It's eleven AM on Monday, Memorial Day weekend, so. Make sure to attend and, and, uh. Thank those that, that serve. Um, that's all I have. We have one more session of public comment. We'll open it up to the public. Good or motion, please?
Motion open for a public comment or. Anything on, anything at all?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and this is open to any comment on anything. I'm going to step up. Please state your comments.
Jeremy Casey, four oh two North Suffolk. Um, I would like this council to look into enabling a feature on the website. To push email updates and notifications when this council takes actions on things. Um, I looked through it. It's kind of hard to find all the minutes and all the resolutions and everything like that. Um, I would like to see if we can put in something to get the word out more on what the town's doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, website's been out there and all that information.
So there, there's a calendar function. Did you see that? The calendar function, if you drill, if you, if you drill down.
No, it's alright.
Yeah.
We meet twice a month?
Um, but it would be nice to have, again.
So you would.
Okay, good ideas. I like that.
You follow us on Facebook because that's the first.
You should have stayed off, I'll tell you that.
Yeah. Right, well, we, we don't, there's a, we, um, we have, uh, we do have an email blast that shows on our Facebook page if you follow us, the city. No, but, um, it's something you can sign up for. We have, uh, we have a weekly news, we have a monthly newsletter. That is also sent to your email. You sign, you can sign up for that on, on our website.
Alright. Thanks, um. Ben?
Just one final comment on the short term rental. So when these people apply for the, apply for their permits for these or the, or their, their mercantile licenses. Does that trigger an automatic inspection of the entire property?
Yes.
So that will hopefully eliminate the triplexes that are not legal, correct? They will, they will be.
There aren't legal triplexes in city.
But there's not that many of them, is there?
I don't know a number on it, but there's significant amounts.
That are legal.
In, in your neighborhood.
That are legal.
It's the, it's the application, it's the occup, it's the occupancy as well that they get inspected for. They measure the size of the bedrooms. And according to the size of the bedroom, then they have a number, a square footage number for how many people can be in that unit. That's, and that's inspected every time they get, they get, they get a mercantile license. Or you as a homeowner decide to rent your property for, uh, any period of.
Yeah, well, I knew that from the days that I rented my old property on Lafayette. I always had it.
Same, same process.
Right.
For short term rentals.
And then, you know, what about reporting when we see illegal activity going on or we see something being rented that doesn't, what? Thing is, you're saying it has to be posted inside the building. It'd be nice that there was something outside the building that we knew that it was actually a legal Airbnb. But if not, you're going to get a lot.
Always call the, um, code office.
Right.
And even Lisa with a mercantile.
Right.
You can always call there and say, is this address have a mercantile for an Airbnb?
You're going to be getting a lot of calls and.
We should do short term rental. Airbnb is like Kleenex, a brand name.